So, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome everyone to the October 5th, 2020 Township of Springfield Planning Board Meeting. Adequate notice has been given in accordance of the Sunshine Laws. Notice was published on September 22nd, 2020 in the Star Ledger, the official newspaper for the Township of Springfield for the year 2020, and posted on the Annex Building on September 22nd, 2020. Let's do a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
A nation, under God.
Invisible.
Under God.
Liberty.
With liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for joining us. Uh, can we do, Ms. Law, can we do a roll call, please?
Yep, can you meet him in the tuber?
He's present.
Mr. David Barnett.
Really here.
Mr. Andrew Schwartz.
Sure, why not?
Mr. Jerry Fernandez.
Here.
Mr. Aaron Lothar.
President and accounted for.
Mr. Brian Brandell.
Definitely here.
Ms. Marissa Rigerio.
I am here.
Mr. Scott Wischna.
Here.
Uh, Vice Chair Kessel.
Here.
And Chair Tiger.
Live, I'm here.
We have a quorum there.
All right, perfect. Okay, so everyone had a chance to review the September 2020 meeting minutes of, uh, our last meeting. Uh, they were on the, on the drive. And if there's any, uh, anyone opposed, anyone against it, could I have a motion for approval? Marissa? Motion for approval?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Uh, anyone want to second it?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Perfect, motion passes. Okay, we had a resolution that was for application 7-2020. This was for, um, on Route 22 Center Island, the, uh, 30 Burgers, which the board granted a change of tenancy with, for minor site plan. They had a small variance for parking. Uh, I know everyone had a chance to review the resolution. Um, if anyone has any questions or concerns? If not, I think Mr. Barnett was going to make a motion.
I am not going to. I'm going to abstain.
Oh, that's right. You could not. So, uh, Mr. Schwartz, I'm hoping we'll just go into it.
I, I will make a motion to approve the resolution on the application for 30 Burgers.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brandell, second it. Uh, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Fernando, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brandell?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Lothar?
Yes.
Ms. Rigerio? Mr. Wischna?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessel?
Yes.
And Chairman Tiger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Perfect. Um, next, so we have two applications tonight from the, uh, to give it over to you for the board. Our meeting will run, uh, up until about 6:45 this evening, so we have two applications, so we'll try to move through, uh, through this, um, as best as we can. So, the first application is application 8-2020S. This is Furniture Assist, which is on Commerce Street, uh, Block 3001, Lot 60. This is for preliminary and final site plan for an accessory structure for storage. So, basically, I, you know, I reviewed the application with Mr. Disco, uh, this morning, and this furniture company wants to, uh, which is a nonprofit, uh, have outside storage. So, that's what the application will center around and, and what we need to do to kind of make it the right thing for Springfield. So, I believe Mr. Schmidt is the Council of Record. Apu, if you can bring him in? I see Mr. Schmidt, but I don't see him. Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Schmidt?
Hi, hear me?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, uh, thank you. Hope you can see me, and I apologize for the reverberation. My client is in the room with me. Um, if it's bad, we can have him turn his computer off and he'll come here to testify.
Yeah, I, I probably, if, if it's not anything, it is a little bad, I don't want the public, as long as you can be socially distanced, separate from each other, if, if he's able to turn it off, that would be great, or at least turn off the mic. We can't see you.
Okay, he's going to turn it off, then he's going to come over here. You won't see us both at the same time, but you'll hear me. I'll make sure I'm loud enough.
That's fine, we can hear you.
Um, members of the board, quickly, as an introduction, Furniture Assist is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit corporation. The goal of this entity is to help people get restarted in life. Uh, we help people by providing furniture, household, um, goods, uh, which could include any kitchenware or dishes in china and, um, clothing. Uh, we help people who particularly are referred to as by so- social service agencies, uh, in Union County, Essex County, Hudson County, and Bergen. These people who would be traditionally be burned out of a house, need furniture to get restarted, could be people who are victims of domestic violence and are required to move out of their house. Um, and it could also be people who have been incarcerated and are released and need to restart. Uh, it is a 100% volunteer organization. We have absolutely no employees. Uh, we take donations, we bring in slightly-used furniture and other things, and we give them out as quickly as we can. Our clients are, again, people who are referred to us by social service agencies. Um, we rent the building, uh, located at 24 Commerce, and it's partly a warehouse, partly offices. Some of the offices are used for the display of household goods and, uh, clothing, and the warehouse, of course, is furniture. We presently need additional space. We are seeking permission to put two 20-foot storage trailers, which we are going to purchase, in the rear yard, and the plan indicates the location will be directly to the rear of the building. Uh, on, if you're looking at the, the building, it'll be to the left of the rear of the building, close to the building. Um, and the purpose, again, is storage. I have our president, um, of the Furniture Assist, who will be here to testify to answer some of the questions, uh, particularly concerning the lighting, the location, uh, the window, um, and the, uh, current condition of the property. Uh, we are not asking for any changes to be done to the property. The property is, has several non-conforming uses. Uh, we are aware, I'm sorry, several non-conforming conditions. We're aware that particularly the driveway is not wide enough, and we are aware that the side yard setback does not meet current code, but these are existing conditions that exist at the property, and, uh, we hope that the board recognizes that, uh, we are not in a position to, to amend or alter them since we do not own the property. Um, if there are no questions at this point, I'd like to bring in my client, Dawson Yeomans, who is the, um, President of the Board.
Mr. Yeomans, would you?
Mr. Yeomans, this is Steve.
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead. Uh, yeah, uh, we're going to swear you in, Mr. Yeomans. Um, I guess we can't see you, but on your honor, do you swear from that any testimony you provide before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir.
Right, um. Mr. Yeomans, on a weekly basis during the week, Monday to Friday, how many volunteers normally work at the building?
Six to, uh, six to eight, six to seven.
And how often are they there?
Uh, our main hours on the weekdays are Mondays and Wednesdays. Uh, that's our main sorting and putting up time. Uh, we do occasionally have volunteers there at the other time, uh, on other days, just to do a specific job.
So, generally, two days a week, the volunteers are working?
Two days a week on the weekdays, yes.
And, um, what about on weekends? Is the organization open on weekends?
Yes, uh, we receive, uh, clients on both Saturdays and alternating Sundays, and we receive donations on the other alternating Sundays.
And this is, this is now because of the pandemic, correct?
This is because of the pandemic, yes.
Pre-pandemic, what were the days of operation on the weekends?
On the weekends was only Sunday, uh, and we did both, uh, clients in the morning and donors in the afternoon.
And do you anticipate going back to that schedule once the pandemic is, uh, under control, so to speak?
Actually, uh, we prefer probably to keep both Saturdays and Sundays. It spreads things out. It allows us to schedule clients better, reduce traffic flow, and do all that, those items. So, we will probably continue both Saturday and Sunday.
How many clients normally come on a, a weekend to, um, get furniture?
Roughly 10 to 15 to get furniture, uh, on any given Saturday or Sunday.
And how many donations are made? How many people come on a, on an average weekend day to donate furniture?
On a weekend, on the Sundays that we accept donations, we normally have about 80 volun- uh, 80 donors, most of them in cars, spread out over the five-and-a-half-hour period that we're open.
And generally speaking, you said they come in cars. How long does it take for somebody to make a donation?
About 10 minutes. By the time they drive their car in, unload, and we, we help them unload, and then, uh, drive out.
And how do you control the traffic into the parking lot?
We have volunteers that control the traffic, check their ID to make sure they have an appointment, uh, or check their name off of our master list for appointments.
What's the largest, I mean, I'm assuming that people who come to accept the furniture, to get the furniture, don't come in cars. Is that fair?
Right now, they will come in a collection of things. Before the pandemic, they rented a U-Haul. Right now, most of our clients do not have the money to rent a U-Haul. They're using it for rent and food. Uh, so they may come in an SUV or a friend's pickup truck. Some rent, but trucks, but most of them right now are SUVs and pickups.
And, and generally speaking, what are the size of the trucks when they do come in trucks?
They come in trucks that are normally a U-Haul size, which is 12 to 16 feet. Sometimes you can get 10-foot truck. It's whatever is available in the lot at U-Haul.
Do we ever have large trucks coming onto the site?
Very seldom. Uh, if we, uh, if a client rents the biggest U-Haul possible, it has to remain outside. There is not enough room in the parking lot. Uh, if we have deliveries from, uh, the smaller local movers, uh, they will normally be, uh, 16 to 20 foot or smaller.
Um, do any of the trucks ever go into the back lot?
Uh, the, uh, trucks for the, uh, clients all go into the back lot. The vehicles for donors, uh, that have furniture all go into the back lot. The, uh, normally, we restrict them to one at a time in the back lot. Uh, the donors' cars or the people like right, a fire victim right afterwards that come only for clothes, they normally park in the front along the side.
You ever have problems with congestion, traffic congestion in the lot?
No.
You ever have problems with congestion because the driveway is only 16 feet wide?
No, the, uh, volunteers will control it. There is, I have never known a case where both a car and a, uh, tries to get in, or a truck tries to get in, and another truck guy tries to get out. We control that traffic.
And generally speaking, when the clients are coming to pick up furniture, how long are they at the site?
About 10 minutes. Oh, no, furniture, uh, excuse me, uh, donors are there about 10 minutes. The clients normally, uh, are about 45 minutes.
Looking at the current condition, the pictures that were taken by the engineer, there's a pod on the site right now?
There is a pod on the site, yes.
What's your intent to do with that pod if, in fact, the variance we're seeking is granted?
That pod would be removed.
Um, and not replaced?
And not replaced.
And the two storage trailers would be there?
Those two storage player trailers would be there.
Okay, the engineer had asked a question of the planner, and I forget which, I apologize, about the trailers blocking a window. Would the trailers be blocking a window?
With the current design and placement, they will be blocking one window on the back of the building. The trailer is set a foot from the side of the, the back of the building, so there would be that foot, but it will physically block a view out that window.
And how close is the next window on the rear side of the building?
There's two windows on that side. The next window is about 10 feet away.
And is there a door also located on that wall?
Five feet beyond that door, or beyond that window, there is a door, a double-wide door.
And the interior space that, that, um, has these two windows and the door, are they, is it open? Is it blocked in any way by walls or other things?
There are no walls in that back warehouse area. It is a completely free, open warehouse area.
Um, who will have access to these trailers if we put them in the back?
Uh, we give limited access. It'll be padlocked, get limited access to, uh, some of our volunteers that need those things in and out, but it will not be generally available, uh, combo locks.
And those will be used for storage of furniture?
They'll be used for storage of furniture, household items, and the items that, uh, we're waiting to bring into the warehouse.
Other than for storage of furniture, uh, are there any other activities of Furniture Assist that occur outside the four walls of the building?
Uh, we do, once a year, a yard sale, for which we get the, uh, permission of the town. This year, like everybody else, we did not have a yard sale for obvious reasons.
Right, um, on the, on the building, on the rear of the building currently, um, well, let me introduce as applicant number two, because applicant number one would be the plans themselves, but A2 would be three pictures that I submitted.
Hold on one second, Mr. Schmidt. Uh, Pooh or Joe, do you have those things? Here, here we go. Who's showing it to us?
Okay, there you go.
Um, that is the engineer's pictures. If you mind, we're three additional pictures, starting with a picture of a garage door with a light over the top.
One moment, I think.
Okay. That's it. Great. I marked those three pictures as A2. Um, the first picture of A2, can you describe that for me?
That is the front of the building. Uh, it shows a garage door in the front of the building, uh, with a, uh, uh, parking lot light over the top.
And what kind of light is that?
That's a motion detector, uh, light.
And was that on the building when you first rented the building?
Yes, it was.
And you haven't altered the lighting in any way?
Uh, the owner of the building did some repair shortly after we moved in.
Well, other than that, there hasn't been any change in the lighting in the building?
No, there has not.
And you're not proposing any in this application?
Nope.
If you go to the second picture on that page, uh, of that packet, um, can you describe what that picture depicts?
If you're standing in the back parking lot, looking at the back of the building, uh, that is the, uh, light, uh, on the back of the building, lighting the parking lot. There is two lights back there, uh, one on either side of the building.
And are these lights that stand for security?
These are, uh, uh, night sensor lights, and they're on for security.
Do you know whether the light from these, um, actually goes across the property line?
Uh, I do, I do not believe that it does. There is a heavy tree, uh, collection in the lots behind.
Okay.
Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Schmidt?
I'm sorry?
Can I interrupt? I think, Mr. Schmidt, uh, this is, uh, Chairman Tiger. I think, um, I think the board, I think we're good. I want to go, if I don't have anything further, I just wanted to open up to my professionals.
Um, just the, the third picture is the picture of the trees in the back. Mr. Yeomans, are these the pic, are these the tree line in the back?
That's the tree line in the back.
And as I understand, there's a fence, and then there's a 50-foot right away before the neighbors?
That is, uh, my opinion, there, not my, uh, knowledge, and that is true.
I have no further questions, none of this witness.
Yes, that, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Um, the one thing that I had, uh, Mr. Schmidt, that I, was my concern, and then we'll turn it over to the, to the, to the engineer and planner, is that if, if the board acted favorably with, with the outside storage, we would probably want this to be for, to run with the use, not with the land. So, that way, if for some reason in the future this is sold to someone else and Furniture Assist isn't operating here, that the owner of the building couldn't use the outside storage, that it would have to be taken away. Is that?
That's, that's an acceptable condition.
Okay, so let me turn it over. Uh, uh, Mr. Disco, do you have anything to add? I think they addressed everything in your letter, but do you have anything to add?
I would just add, I discussed with the building department the issue of the one-foot setback from the container to the window. They said that's not an issue in a non-residential structure. The windows never serve as the egress, as part of the egress requirement. So, that fear, uh, basically disappeared. There is a 50-foot, uh, buffer to the rear of this property before you get to the homes at New Brook. It once was a municipal, uh, easement or property, and it looks like over time it's been sold off piecemeal to the various, um, commercial establishments on Commerce. The immediate 50 feet behind it is owned by the property to the right or the east of the project. So, I mean, I had a couple of minor things in there, you know, some patching in the parking lot where the accessible route is. Uh, other than that, I, I don't really have anything significant. I, I was at the facility once on a Sunday for a drop-off. Uh, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Yeomans, their testimony seems accurate to me based upon my one, one, um, appearance there.
So, so, Mr. Disco, any other conditions? I would think that just the one that I came up with would be the only one. I think they had adequate, with that 50-foot striping and screening, it seems right. The lighting hasn't changed at all. Um, anything else that, is there any other conditions, or do you think they addressed everything?
Uh, again, just patching the rear parking lot where the accessible route is, because we wouldn't obviously want to direct somebody in a wheelchair or, or, or mobility issues through a section of the parking lot that was in poor shape. There's no landscaping proposed, uh, you know, there's a buffer to the rear. It's an existing, no changes. There is one tree on the front, um, mid-lawn. Certainly could always use an additional tree, but I'm not presuming that, you know, for a nonprofit, we would have to necessarily require that. So, I, I have nothing further.
It, it sounds to me that they're a nonprofit with, you know, operating on very low funds, so wouldn't be, uh, uh, especially in a, in a commercial area, but open up to the board on that. So, just some minor patching is what you wanted, uh, additional potentially? If needed.
Yes, just, just where the accessible route is going to be is the critical one.
Okay.
Not an issue.
Not an issue, okay. Mr., uh, let me, let's go to the planner before we open up the board. Keenan, any, any questions, concerns?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would add, um, is just, you know, in terms of the variance criteria here, they're asking for variances basically for the placement of these accessory storage units, but the testimony is clear that this is a charitable organization, and the use of these storage containers are really integral to, to furthering their mission. So, I think they can satisfy the positive criteria for both the variances, and as has been pointed out, the placement of these on the site, I think it's an appropriate location. It's one that's not going to impact any of the neighbors due to the, the distance and the buffering that separates the containers from, from the neighbors. So, I think, from my perspective, there's certainly a, a strong C2 justification for the variances that they're requesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It sounds like you just wrote the resolution for Steve. But, okay, so let me open it up to the board, uh, for any questions and concerns. Uh, Mr. Fernandez?
The, the lighting, um, Mike, you, you felt the lighting's okay with where the containers are and everything?
Yeah, there's, uh, when I went and took my pictures, the rear lights were actually on. It was going towards dusk on one day. So, there, there is a light right where the containers are. That's strategic and fortunate. I don't anticipate there would be any light that would violate our ordinance by going to residential areas, probably 70, 80 feet away from where the lights are.
That's all, no, that's it. No other question.
Perfect. Uh, Mr. Brandell? No, I'm good. Thank you. Mr. Lothar?
Yeah, I have a question, I think. It says the, uh, the storage containers and the, uh, I guess a refuse area, I see, was, was listed, to be go back there. Has there been any, any in the past, do you know if there's been any issues with the residents as far as traffic, lighting, structures? I'm just curious if that's going to create a problem. I don't, I'm not, I, I'm not trying, I'm not picturing it properly, how far away and what exactly is in between this lot and the resident, and the residents?
There have been no problems with, uh, uh, the lighting with the neighbors. We've talked to the neighbors periodically, uh, so there's been no problem with lighting at all.
And what about as far as putting these structures?
Say again?
It's, what about as far as putting the storage containers and the, uh, refuse, uh, refuse building, refuse area? Will that be a problem as far as the, uh, do you foresee a problem with neighbors?
Uh, no, I do not. Uh, when we first moved in, there was a problem. The neighbor was complaining about the noise of removing a dumpster, but that turned out to be the dumpster on the neighbor's lot, not on our lot at all.
Okay.
And it seems like, Mr. Lothar, it seems like there's that huge 50-foot buffer behind with some tree landscaping that's already there to begin with. So, it sounds like a lot of that would be taken care of anyway.
Okay, I'm good then.
Mr. Schwartz? Andrew?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
I, is my understanding correct that the, uh, storage unit will be locked, uh, at all times when it's not in use?
Yes.
Okay, then my only other comment is just one procedurally, that Mr. Schmidt, uh, in the future, when you appear before the board, it would be helpful, under these circumstances, if you had video access, it's difficult to, while this is not a controversial application, uh, it's difficult to assess a witness's credibility when we can't see him.
Now, I apologize, because this is a laptop that I used just today for a WebEx meeting and had full access. I'm not sure why it's not connecting today.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. That's good. That's actually good feedback, Andrew. We're going to have to make sure applicants, given that where we are in this world right now, they need to be in front of us. So, you're right, well, that'll be something Jen will have to test it beforehand with Apu, uh, before we start, uh, the meeting. Um, Mr. Barnett?
I know my questions were answered. Biggest concern was if any, um, blockage of egress, but that's been addressed.
There you go. I apologize. Mike, that was my technical incompetence.
Perfect. We got to start all over now, Mr. Schmidt. We're going to start all over. Just kidding.
I like to talk, so therefore, yes.
Mr. Huber?
No, all my questions were answered.
Perfect. Uh, Marissa Rigerio?
I'm good, thank you.
Perfect. Mr. Wischna?
Uh, interestingly, I may have been the neighbor that complained about the dumpsters when I lived on New Brook 10 years ago.
Is your wife's name Michelle?
Well, my ex-wife's name is Michelle.
Oh, my gosh.
Therefore, I can attest to the fact that the neighbor, um, continually broke with ordinance relative to their trash pickups, what have you. Not, not, not the reason that she's my ex-wife, though. Nothing to do with that, but, um, you know, that said, I think that, um, you know, my only question really, you know, this, this site obviously doesn't, i- is not perfect, um, to meet the needs of what you're accomplishing here. Um, and I, I am making the assumption, but I'd like to hear, um, from Mr. Yeomans if, you know, uh, just based on, you know, seeking an alternate site to operate this business, I assume was, you know, not financially feasible, therefore, this was the, the easiest solution to, you know, manage through the issues that you have. Is that accurate?
Yes, five years ago, this was what we could afford, uh, and, uh, it has been a very pleasant, very enjoyable location.
Okay, well, I mean, as someone who's donated in the past, I think you guys are doing a great job, and, uh, appreciate that you guys continue to make a home here in Springfield, so.
Thank you very much.
No questions for me.
Perfect. Mrs. Kessel?
Uh, my questions have been answered, and, uh, yes, I have a technical issue with my camera right now. Um, and I just wanted to say that you guys really are, are a wonderful asset to the community and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Perfect. And I'm next, and I already said what my conditions were. So, at this time, uh, is there any members of the public that wish to speak on this application? Please raise your hand in the Q and A, and Apu will bring you forward. Apu, if you could just, we'll give it a, like, 30 seconds to a minute, just to see if there's anyone, um, in the public that wishes to speak? Are you seeing anyone, Apu?
Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none, I'm going to take this opportunity to close this matter to the public and remand it back to the board. Uh, to me, it's just a straightforward, um, uh, application for, uh, variance for accessory structure, for two accessory structures with two conditions. The first one being that this exception or variance would only run with the tenant and not with the, with the property. So, if the tenant ever left or bigger building or so forth, um, the owner would not be able to have the accessory structures. That would be that. And then the second issue is to work with Mr. Disco on some minor patching along the egress area.
Agreed, great.
Perfect. Uh, does, uh, someone want to make a, a motion, like Marissa, since she's smiling?
Um. I will entertain a motion, um. I don't know what the language is.
For application 2020S.
Okay, so make a motion to, uh, um, so you said 2020S?
For preliminary and final site plan.
Yep.
Second.
Thanks.
Can we have a roll call with? Marissa's condition, Marissa's motion included in two conditions that I read.
Okay. Mr. Jario? Yes. May I make a move, Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Brendel?
Yes.
Chair Kessel?
Yes.
And Chair Tiger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Schmidt, I assume that you guys want to get started. Our next meeting is November. Fifth, sixth, I'm not 100% sure. And that's when we would have stopped the resolution. So I assume, given that there was no public here, you want the board to waive reading and you can proceed on your own risk.
If if the board would be so kind, yes.
Any members of the board have any issues? We've done this before.
No issues.
No issues. Perfect. All right. Well, good luck, Furniture Assist. Thank you for being a part of Springfield and doing good things.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Apu, our next application is is application 60 S 2020 S. This is for 65 Springfield Avenue, a condominium condominium associations, block 301, lot three. This is a preliminary. And final site plan for front yard variance for a fence. This is pretty interesting for the board to do. I don't know who the attorney is, Ms. Law, so maybe a poo come up for that person.
It's listed as Daniel Lagana. At least Daniel Lagana did the notice.
We have our Scott King and. Couple people and Mr. See.
I think it's Scott King, if you can promote him.
Mr. King?
Good evening. There we go.
Perfect. So, Mr. King. Couple housekeeping things before you start. We have to, we have a stop around 645, 650. So I want to try to move quickly. So I'm going to turn it over you to kind of overview of the case, but from the board's overview, I was actually at the site with Mr. Disco today. You know, the applicant's proposing to put a has had a bunch of traffic accidents where I believe you guys have all the pictures where there's been cars that have on the bend for Springfield Avenue that have actually went into the building. And they've had a lot of traffic at the wrecks there. So looking to put in some safety. Things like a fence and some landscaping to kind of try to buffer the building from any other accidents that could happen. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. King, to give a brief overview, and then maybe you can call your witness.
Thank you very much. My name is Scott King with the firm of Dakota. It's Patrick Cohen Givlin on behalf of the applicant. 65 Springfield Avenue Condominum Association. Property, as you might have guessed, is located at 65 Springfield Avenue. It's a three story office building, which is a permitted use in the I 20 general industrial zone where it's located. It fronts on Springfield Avenue to the south. Interstate 78 is in the rear of the property to the north, has commercial uses surrounding it and across the street from it. Because of the location. Of or the situation requested, again, because of the way the property structures located is is considered the front of the of the building. This is an application for preliminary and final site. Plan approval, including three variances. One of those variances is the location of the fence in the nonresidential zone. Again, as I said, because of the way the building is situated on the property, the fence that is going to be requested along the easterly sideline driveway. Is considered in the front of the property. Fences are not permitted in the front of properties in the nonresidential zone. Second variance is for the height of the fence where a six foot fence is permitted for reasons which we'll explain. We're requesting an eight foot fence. And the third variance that we're seeking. Is the realignment of the curb at the very front of the driveway for the purpose of. Aligning it properly with the curb cut on Springfield Avenue and also to hopefully address some of your engineers' concerns regarding driveway geometry and access to the property. There are two driveways, one on the easterly side, which is ingress only, which is why I believe. The fourth variance that was suggested by your planner, Mr. Hughes, really isn't applicable. That dealt with the width of the driveway. But the understanding that it was a two way driveway, but it is only a one way driveway. So I don't believe that that variance is necessary since there's an egress driveway on the westerly side of the property. In addition to the fence that we're seeking along the driveway itself, there's another small fence which. We might be able to to really re-describe as a series of bollards on the westerly side of the driveway, right behind the sign. In front of the street that that's already there. You'll see on some of the photos that there is a gas meter and some gas lines. On the outside of the building there that we're just trying. To protect again, for the same reason as we're looking for the fence. And that's because of several traffic accidents that have resulted in cars. Going over the existing landscaping into the side of the building. Depending on the nature of your questions, I might have only two witnesses, possibly three. The first of those would be Mr. James Chiarazzi. Who is the the building's operation manager, who can testify as to the need for the fence. And the reason that it's being requested in the location that it is. And can more describe more thoroughly describe the number of accidents. And we also have some photos showing those. The results of those accidents in the driveway. Second witness would be Mr. Zer Syed, who is the structural engineer for the fence. We also have available the architect who created the site plan. And again, to the extent necessary, we have the contractor who would be building the fence. Unless there are any questions from my initial. Outlay of what we're doing, I would like to call Mr. James Chiarazzi. Hopefully, he's one of those people whose initials I see here. There he is.
Mr. King, for just some housekeeping, I think you only, I think to me, we would only need the first two witnesses. So let's focus on them and then we'll see what the board feels as collective. And then we'll decide. We'll decide if we need others.
Chiarazzi, can you unmute your line? I see you have two two connections to the zoom. Whichever one you're on, can you unmute it and turn your camera on if you have a camera? I don't think you heard us, Mr. King.
Hi, Jim. If you can unmute yourself and. To the extent you have a camera, if you could turn it on.
Hello.
Hi, Jim.
And can anyone hear me?
Yes.
But not see you.
All right, well. At least you could hear me. I'm trying to to get a get the camera working. I don't know why it's not doing it.
The camera is actually very important.
Yes, I know.
In this standpoint, because this is a. An application with some significant.
Mr. Chiarazzi, if you take your cursor, if you're using a PC and you you can see on the bottom left hand above your taskbar, there should be a mute and a stop video. Maybe that you can turn your video on that way if you click on the video icon. Near the bottom left of your screen. Again, above the taskbar.
Yeah, right here. Yeah, I'm doing that. It says Zoom is unable to detect a camera. Ah, very frustrating. I'm sorry, young lady.
We're going to trust you on your honor and we'll move forward.
Mr. Charazi, we're going to swear you in. Mr. Chiarazzi, do you swear from that the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chiarazzi, can you, for the record, tell us your title at the at the building?
Yeah, I am the Facilities Operations Manager.
And how long have you been the Facilities Operation Manager at that building?
At that building, probably about eight years, a total of 13 years with the union. As the manager.
And then your eight years operating that building. Are you familiar with the day to day operations of the property?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay. If it's possible, can we bring up what's listed as exhibit A1? In our packet? Okay, Mr. Chiarazzi, can you can you describe the. The general property and the location where we are looking to have your your fence located?
Well, sure, yeah. Well, it's the fence would be located on the. East. Side of the property, right along the driveway that entrance to the building. In between us and the Musadell factory, the deli next to us.
Okay, and if you look at what's marked is number one, the aerial view?
Yes.
Can you just, I'm not sure if anyone could see the cursor is moving there, but can you show the. The general location of the fence? I believe there's a grassy area between the. Buildings shown as operating engineers local 825.
Sure, can can you see my cursor moving? Or no?
Is it is it? Is it safe to say that the the location or the planned location of the fence would be in the to the left of the grassy area? Showing on the right of the driveway between your building and Antonio's Italian market.
Yep, that's it. It's right there. That's it. It's right on the, it's actually literally on the property line. Just a few inches off of it.
And during your your eight years at that property. There have been a number of accidents involving your building, automobile accidents. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
It's it's actually a frequent occurrence.
And if we could, I believe it's attached to the end of the application. If we could raise that, there are a number of photos showing some of the accidents. After they've occurred at the property. Leave the last five pages or so our photos. And I believe, Mr. Chiarazzi, that the photos that are. Are attached to your. Show. Four different accidents, five different accidents at the scene. Can you explain to the board? Or try to give the board an idea of the location of this accident in relation to your driveway? Is that your driveway on the left hand side of the photo?
It is correct. This particular one didn't come up on our property. It spun, they usually lose control about where the ambulance is parked, just in the in the background of the picture. That's usually where they lose control and often they'll go into that driveway of the Musadell factory. And then hit the curb and the apron. It acts as a ram and literally launches the automobiles. Over the landscaping shrubs and into our building.
That's not what I expected in this photo, though.
No, you'll see it in other photos. This one, the person just went too fast around the curve and and took out the pole. That that's one of the.
I'm not sure if this is one that you had marked one or one A, but if we could, if we could have this group of pictures marked A1 for. The purposes of identification.
Mr. King, these these photographs were submitted with your application?
These were, yes.
There's no need to mark them as a separate example.
If we could, if we could just, there might be one photo prior to this one.
Yeah, I believe there is. It's nope. Well, there should have been.
Okay, then let's go. Okay, one might be missing then because there is, there was one photo that showed a car that landed about eight feet away from the gas line that we're also discussing here. But photos two and three, can you can you tell me what photos two and three show?
Yeah, photos two and three, if you go back one, yeah, that one. That gentleman came in and if you if you look at the photograph, you'll see where he came into building is actually at the window height. If you look on the bottom, the first row of bricks were not even touched of cinder blocks. He came in at the window height, the bottom of the window. And that's that's about five feet high, maybe a little higher. And what he did to do that, he was in excess of 100 miles an hour. Hit that apron that I discussed earlier. And just launched and cleared, totally cleared the shrubs that are on the east side of this driveway. Pretty much where the picture is being taken from. And no shrubs are six feet, six inches high. And the car cleared them without. Crushing the bushes at all. He went completely over it into that end. Just thankful this this was late at night because that's that is a doctor's office. And the front of the car is in the waiting room of the doctor's office. The back of the car is in the reception desk. That would have been a terrible, terrible situation there. As it is, you could see the drape on the car. The gentleman died right there in the car.
Okay, and then the next photo?
Let's see, that's. Yeah, that's the that's the first time we had a car go through. And if you notice, the same thing you see of that hole, this guy wasn't going quite as fast. But he was also airborne. If you look, the the first two rows of cinder block on the bottom. Of the wall are hardly damaged at all because it once again, he was airborne. And just cleared those bushes and hit a little bit lower than the than the other guy, but he was still significantly in the air. He was airborne and this particular guy was upside down as well.
So so I'm going to interrupt.
Also the doctor's office waiting room, is it not?
If you had the same spot, same spot. It's 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 that it's that they lose it on that curve and then hit that apron and just take off and they're airborne.
Yeah. I'm going to interrupt. This is the chairman. I think we clearly established that this is clear. There needs to be something there. So why don't we talk about what needs to go there? And the height and and that's the the thing that we have to get through. I mean, I was at the site today with Mr. Disco. We saw tire tracks there that were in the grass. So it's clear that something. Absolutely needs to be there. So maybe we can move on to where you talk about the differences, whether it's a six foot versus eight. I know you're asking for eight, the type of fence, the screening and so forth.
Sure, I think the important point that was just made in Mr. Chiarazzi's testimony was the fact that. Two of those cars that ended up inside the building cleared a six foot, six inch set of shrubbery without even touching it. That that is one of the reasons that it's necessary for this fence that they're looking to put up to be eight feet tall because a six foot fence. The cars would have cleared that just as as easily as they did the six foot, six inch shrubs.
Yeah, it reminds me of growing up with the Dukes of Hazzard watching. Okay. Let's maybe go on to the witness to talk a little bit about the fence and the landscaping because I think that's what the board has to kind of evaluate. I mean, the the pictures are evidently clear that it's a problem.
One one photo that wasn't there for some reason was the one that showed a car that didn't go over the shrubs, but ended up about eight feet away from the. The gas line that's at the front of the building, which is the other area that they're looking to put in either a fence or bollards.
Is that by the gas line area?
Yeah, that got the the gas line is right behind the existing sign. At the front of the building and they're just looking to put a similar. Set of bollards and cabling across that to protect the gas line.
Makes sense. Makes sense. You want to go through, let's describe. I think the board needs to understand with what you're proposing because that's what makes the difference. That's where you'll get some of the questions from the board members. Of the material and so forth. And then Mr. Disco and Mr. Hughes can kind of weigh in.
Sure, I guess then we would need to get Mr. Said. Was the structural engineer. Testify as to the the location, the size and the construction of the fence.
Mr. Said, we're going to swear you in. Say, do you swear affirm that the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Can you please provide us your the business name and the business address that you're associated with?
So this is UBS Engineering and the address is 321 Mobbie Street, M A W B E Y. Woodbridge, New Jersey, 07095.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Said. And I assume that. Or accepts his qualifications as an expert?
Yeah, I think that we accept his qualification. Any of the board members have any questions, concerns? Yeah, I think that he the we accept his qualification. Any board members have any questions, concerns? I don't see anyone raising their hand or looking like it. Good. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Said, um, can we uh, can we bring up uh what we'd like to mark as A3, the site plan details?
I think it's, is it part of the original application?
Was it uh, I believe it was submitted with the application.
Well, then I don't think it, Steve, I don't think it needs to be.
No, we don't need to mark it. As long as it's part of the application and the board members have it, we don't need to independently mark it.
Okay, then if you could just go to, I believe, the second page, Mr. uh, Mr. Said, if you could explain to the board the nature, the design of the fence and the necessity for the uh the height of the fence and its location?
Uh, sure. So we visited the site, looked into the situation, heard from the uh, the contractor and the property manager. And along with that, we had architects from James Guerra. I'm not sure if they have been elevated yet. Um, but they might, they might have some input in there also. And looking into all the concerns, we wanted to select a system um which is not very penalizing to anyone who hits the 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 system which is supposed to stop any incoming car. Uh, we thought of different systems, a concrete column system or an steel one. And the final conclusion was that a steel post system probably is better. Just to explain you the background theory, not without getting into too much detail of it. If the car hits in something softer, which is more movable, more flexible, it's going to experience lesser force. If the car hits into some solid structure, it's going to experience a lot more force and a lot more damage. Based on this, we selected a steel tube system. Steel tubes by their nature are much more flexible compared to the building structure. So the intent was that while we are stopping any incoming cars, um, we are also imposing less energy on the incoming vehicle compared to if it goes and hits the block wall or the building structure, which is by its nature way more stiffer than the fence that we are planning in there. Design methodology is basically an energy method used by US Army or this type of particular uh barrier structures or control structures. Um, and it's, it's designed in a fashion that it's focused towards absorbing energy and controlling the damage impact. There is going to be some movement.
And can you uh, and I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to do this. If you look um on the upper left-hand corner of the uh first page of the site plan where it says work area, just for the identification here, you can show the the board the approximate location of uh of where the fence is going to go?
So each square represents the fence post here.
And what what would go in between each of those posts?
Uh, we we are planning to use um high-strength steel wires, which are generally used in parking garages. Uh, these are non-pretension, just hanging from each side. And the intent is that if anything goes in between the post, these wires will hold it. Um, posts are selected in a way that they li- align with the standard spacing of cars, six and a half feet, so posts are spaced out and come from that, and yes, it's four typical spacing on our drawings. Um, and the intent is there's anything small like a bike or a three-wheeler, um, there will be these high-strength steel wires to hold.
And then to the, to the left driveway, three posts, is that the location of the gas line?
That is correct. That's the location of gas main gas line.
And can you explain why the uh the plan called for uh fence posts of eight feet as opposed to sixteen?
We have talked to the witness who was witnessing earlier in this meeting. And based on the discussions and looking at, sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chirazi?
Yes, Mr. Chirazi, that's right. Um, so loo- looking into all these testimonies and pictures, we came to this conclusion that a six-feet fence might not be able to serve its purpose in case if a high-speed car gets airborne, it might simply just go over the six-feet fence. And we also looked into it while we were at site and compared it with the height of the bush on the site. And it was very obvious that it might not be able to uh to serve the intended purpose of the of the barrier.
And there was a question from the borough engineer concerning any interference with the fence and the existing light poles toward the rear of the property? Um, can you testify as to where the fence would end in comparison to the beginning of those light poles?
Um, I think there are plans available, but uh if, can we elevate Mr. Ivanoo from James Guerra? He has more detailed information of it as project architect. But as far as I understand in terms of project plans, we are clear of the light poles.
Yeah, that's, I think that's. That far, is that correct?
That is correct. I think we are clear of the light poles based on our drawings and plans.
Mr. King, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you. Uh, I think near and I were on the site today and let him, he can address that himself. So.
I'm sorry, who?
My, our, our engineer, Mr. Disco and I were on the site today and we we checked on that. We'll let him talk about that in a second as well.
And and uh one other question, again, again, the the plans show a fence on the left-hand side of the driveway. Would a a series of bollards do the uh the same serve the same purposes as what you've shown as a fence?
That is correct.
Okay, and what would the height of those bollards or the fence be on that side?
Same height as this fence. Again, the intent is to fully cover the gas lines and meters to avoid any catastrophic situation.
And the nature of the design of this fence, would it um prohibit or reduce the ability to see um into the property from the adjoining property or from Springfield Avenue?
I would say it's not even covering um, you know, ten percent of the area. So, um, well, actually a little bit more than ten percent. I would say it's like twenty percent uh solid and eighty percent porous.
So does that mean that it's your opinion that it would not uh materially interfere with the view of the property from the, from the street or from the adjoining property?
I would say very limited impact in my opinion.
Yeah, so, so Mr. King, I think that wha- whatever will be done, we'll probably look for your expert to work with Mr. Disco on a landscaping plan. Uh, you know, in front of the uh the fence, you know, whether it's some arbor buddies.
With the understanding that that property is not our property. Uh, we do have the consent of the adjoining landowner to replace anything that we've damaged, and I believe there's a general uh goodwill between the parties, uh, and I believe that the the adjoining property owner would consent to whatever reasonable landscaping plan the uh township would have.
Yep, and and the idea would be if Mr. Disco is if Mr. Disco is satisfied that there wasn't a resolution to be had, the board would be acceptable with that. Mr. Disco, our engineer, we call him the arbitrator of all, amongst other, amongst assistant board secretary, municipal engineer and all the other stuff that he has. So let's, if you don't have anything further, I want to turn it over to him to kind of answer some uh ask your professionals potentially some questions or give the board some.
Sure.
Mr. Disco?
Yes, I think the um, certainly there's compelling testimony that there's a need for this. I think the question of six foot to eight foot, they've addressed the reasons why they want eight feet. It is an open type of fence. This is not a barrier that you won't be able to see through. So there are posts. Uh, perhaps the color of the post could be muted, maybe a black would do that, I don't know. Uh, or or a traditional um silver type of uh color with the wires through it. Uh, there was, Mr. Chiaruzzi did remind me, we had a TRC meeting on this probably close to a year ago at this point with police and fire. Um, they're certainly supportive of the um the need for the project. Uh, they did re- request uh that there would be some viewability through this barrier, and I think the design intent achieves that. Um, so any landscaping uh we would do would be something that would be smart in that it wouldn't um necessarily uh obliterate that view that they're trying to accomplish. So we'll be happy to work with all parties with that. I think the light pole, there was one light pole that is down. My concern was not necessarily where the extent of the uh fence or barrier would be, but also the construction-related uh limits of of the work, which are going to be beyond obviously the the extent of it. So um, again, it was, I was presented with a letter earlier today from the Mussoirella Factory property owner. It seems to be a willingness to uh give the applicant property owner um the ability to construct this properly and then restore anything that's uh damaged, including landscaping and the light pole. So um, I would, I would, at that point, um, refer to the the other experts at the meeting and uh answer any questions.
So Mike, before I go to Mr. Hughes, do you have any concerns of being, of making sure, being the arbitrator ever when the fence is constructed or in advance that we try to get uh some landscaping that shields the view? Because, you know, I think they clearly made it, made it, made the impact that it has to happen. We're all for it. I think the the police, when they wrote the letter, agreed that the email, email, that they agreed that it had to happen. They took no uh, nothing against the application. That to avoid coming down from Union through Springfield Avenue, get coming into Springfield, to have a a fence that is not aesthetically pleasing, I'd like to shield it as much as we can with landscaping. Because it'll serve an additional buffer in case a car hits before it hits the uh fence.
I think we can all agree with that.
Perfect. And the applicant? Perfect, Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add other than just to to point out, I think it's pretty clear this is a unique situation, so that the the township's prohibition on fences in the front yard and the limitation on six feet. Um, I think they made a compelling case why they needed to deviate from those standards. Obviously, the visual impact is is sort of the key thing here, and it sounds like with the landscaping, um, there's some potential to to work that out. But again, and you know, it's one of those situations where public safety sort of rises above all, and the the benefits of of creating a safer environment here, I would have to think outweigh any detriments associated with the visual impact of this fence.
Perfect, okay, so we're in agreement. I think um, I think I'll add before I open up to the board is that I was there today and I was definitely questioning six versus eight. When I saw some of the pictures and the areas of where they are, it kind of helped me get to the point that eight could, would be, I know that, and Mr. Huber is one of the first persons versus six versus eight, and he's smiling now. But in this case, eight would be something that we should entertain with landscaping that is mature to cover the eight-foot would be the big thing. So not three-foot landscaping that'll grow in five, six years, but mature landscaping that will grow. So I'm gonna open up to the board, I'm gonna go in the same order as last time. Uh, Mr. Fernandez?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Brendel?
I have two questions. One, I think, is for Mr. Disco, one is for the applicant. Um, Mr. Disco, I I obviously don't want a big, so first of all, completely agree on the need for this. Um, is eight feet enough if the applicant said that a car easily cleared six foot, six hedges with no impact to them? This is only eighteen inches taller. Um, is that enough? And then, or subsequent, or same question, I guess, similar to the applicant, have we approached the Mussoirella Factory without saying, hey, can we put these smaller balusters, bollards, excuse me, closer to the roadway to get the car on the way up instead of hoping it doesn't go over the fence? So, Mr. Disco, I guess first question for you is, you think eight feet's enough?
I I think so, because uh given the the roadway elevation and the and the testimony that we heard regarding planters, um, I think if you went to ten or twelve, you know, the the car flight, even with the hundred mile per hour, is unlikely to have been that high. And I think that's a very rare case, but they've repeatedly, there's five instances where they've shown accidents here. So I think you want to protect that. When we were in the field today and I showed Chairman Tiger, uh, because he had actually asked about putting a barrier closer to the Mussoirella Factory driveway, but that's not the applicant property. But what you want to do is you want to give a vehicle an opportunity to recover. So if a, if a vehicle was off the road in the grassy area, there is the potential that they could correct and perhaps right the ship sort of and get back to the roadway or the sidewalk or whatever, without hitting the building. So I think you want to have the barrier as far away from the roadway just to minimize the number of uh incidents. Obviously, the severity, if somebody's gonna uh, you know, reach all the way to the driveway or ultimately the building, that speed and the loss of control is just unavoidable at that point. The barrier is necessary. So I think we want to keep the barrier away from the edge of the roadway just to minimize the number of these instances, although they may be more minor. We want to just reduce the conflict.
Okay, and you think eight feet is good enough?
I think eight feet is good. I mean, you know, i- if if the design engineer was confident with six, I would have went with that, but based upon the the real-world experience here. When you have vehicles not crashing, you know, at at ground level into the building, they're clearly, you know, have been uh into in airborne. And um, you know, could always adjust in the future, but I think, I think eight is that the right number.
Okay, yeah. Could have been a drive-in movie theater instead of a drive-in doctor's office at this point in time. Um, Mr. Loffler?
Yeah, I I I know this building very well, because I know people who've been in that building. Uh, maybe I'm being a little naive, but since we're doing work on this building anyways, there way, is there something we can do that could actually cut down on the number of accidents, the number of incidents, maybe some kind of lighting where people could drivers can see from a distance and maybe can slow down? Maybe this is beyond our our scope, but I I would think that if anything we can do to to actually prevent any accidents from taking place or or to make it less likely, I think that should be considered.
Yeah, so Mr. Disco uh and I spoke today, we're gonna, one of the conditions of approval is gonna be that to reach out to the county, the applicant would have to make a reasonable effort, subject to Michael's um uh feeling that they are making the uh reasonable condition. Um, reasonable effort that to try to get something maybe ten feet up on Springfield Avenue with like, you know, a sign that says slow down, curve, turn, just like you, when you drive through the mountains and so forth, that you would see that, maybe some lights flash flashing lights on the sign, but Michael will work with the applicant. That will be a condition that at least try. Again, it's the county, we can ask, we have no jurisdiction over that, but it's something that Michael can work with them on.
How about, how about lighting that's attached to the uh, to the new fencing? Would that, would that be something that could be feasible where people, where drivers could see? That, because it is, it isn't a really eye position, that building. I'm not sure how it got approved in the first place, but uh, but I just, just so people could see that it's there, because you could easily drive past it and not see it at night easily.
Michael, do you wanna um?
Well, yeah, uh, that I think there was two questions in there. Number one, you know, you you are traffic control uh measures that could be uh installed. When I, when I looked at the entire Springfield Avenue uh cartway uh earlier today, there was on the Google Earth Street View, there were Chevron signs. I don't know if if that terminology everybody understands. It's a black and yellow which is a pointed in a direction where the turn is required. And so there was a series of Chevrons there. I certainly think we could add more signage, which would be guidance for the the motorists that if they're not familiar with the area, they, that it might help them to uh negotiate the turn better. I mean, clearly ninety-nine point nine percent of the vehicles manage the 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 roadway geometrics. But obviously, there seems to be a reason, whether it's just high speed alone, whether there's impairment, it looked like there was day and nighttime accidents, so I don't know if you can, you know, have a conclusion otherwise. But certainly, signage on a county road is something that we could request. It would, I don't know why the county would oppose it. Uh, you do have the island near Victory Road, you have the beginning of the curb uh adjacent to the uh, the the condos, the apartments. So I think there's opportunity there to accentuate the signage on this, and maybe that would be beneficial. Uh, as far as lighting, I mean, the one thing we don't want to do is is also cause a distraction. So it may be that the lights might have to be on a signage. I don't think the lights on the fence would be appropriate. I think first of all, from where the curve begins, I don't think that they're going to be effective. I think by the time you see the light on, on this barrier, it's probably too late for that curve. But I think we could potentially ask the county to give us some lighting with the sign. It's, it's kind of rare that they do that. It's really on drastic measures, but we have had a fatality here. And so maybe they would be receptive to that. That's what I offer on.
Okay. I have nothing else.
So Mr. King, that would be one of the conditions that you would work very aggressively with the county and Mr. Disco to try to accomplish that.
Understood.
And if, if Mr. Disco came back to the board and said, they just won't do it, we obviously wouldn't hold it up, obviously. Mr. Disco would handle that. Okay. Mr. Schwartz?
I'm sorry, folks, but I'm greatly troubled by this application. And as the testimony stands presently, I'm not going to vote to approve it. I think that we have not heard nearly enough, and I'm afraid we're making a bad situation worse. Among other comments here, I think it was Mr. Disco mentioned an email from the police. I never received a copy of that, so I have no idea what our police department is saying here. But my concern is we've now seen pictures of what happens when a car hits that spot at 100 miles an hour and loses control. But now we're going to put up essentially steel bollards within eight or 10 feet of the roadway. So what happens in the winter when a car that's going 30 miles an hour skids on ice and now hits bollards that if they weren't there, they would be able to stop and likely come to a stop well short of the building? Are we going to create a situation where a car is going to be greater damaged? Are we creating a situation where the pet, with the driver or passenger is going to be injured? So I'd like to know from the applicant here, why are we talking about putting six and eight-feet bollards and fences on this side of the driveway instead of bollards on the other side of the driveway? And thus giving a vehicle that skids off the road at a lesser velocity an opportunity to stop without creating either damage to property or damage to an individual?
Mr. King, do you want to have your witness answer that?
Sure. Mr. Syed, I believe you've heard Mr. Schwartz's comment.
I would say in, to, to better respond to this comment, we should elevate Mr. Ivano Marunada, who is also on the call, and he is basically the design architect of this project. Is it doable? Because he is the one who's responsible of putting together this, this layout.
Sure.
Mr. Tiger, I just want to remind you of the time.
Yeah, I know. We're probably not going to finish the application tonight anyway, given the constraints of the time. We'll end up carrying it. But let's just hear from the applicant and then we're going to, Mr. Disco.
If I can, then, Mr. Tiger, before we run out of time, if there, I've got a number of questions I'd like to put to the applicant so they are prepared to answer them when they come back.
A hundred percent. Let's, let's actually do that. Andrew, why don't you go through your questions?
Yeah.
And let's hear what else the board has.
What I, what I would like to hear from both the applicant and Mr. Disco, I'd like to hear from our police and fire department as well, is we, we've seen now the result of a car we're told was going 100 miles an hour. I'd like to know what the result would be at various speeds of a car of different types. A Toyota, Camry, an SUV, a truck hitting these bollards at, say, 30, 60, and 80 miles an hour versus putting stronger bollards closer to the building so that in that rare circumstance, and it does appear to be a rare circumstance, that the vehicle reaches the building, that's really the place we want to be stopping it. And there is, it appears from the pictures I've seen, there's room to stop a vehicle if you put heavier bollards right there on the edge, on the other side of the driveway, and thus avoid unnecessary damage and potential physical harm where they're looking at putting the bollards now. So that's the explanation I'd like to hear from the various experts in particular.
Okay. Let's note that. I want to just get the board's concern so they can go in, because, you know, Andrew, so you know, the police just lettered, email was that they took no issue with the application. Wasn't anything descriptive that to pass along, but.
I think I would love to hear from our traffic engineer on, on these issues, because I'm not sure that enough weight has been given to this possibility. Because again, while we've seen two or three examples of extreme high-speed accidents, it's the lower-speed accidents where somebody is, for lack of a better description, minding their own business and hits a wet or an icy spot, and now is, instead of skidding up onto the grass and, you know, causing minor damage to landscaping, going to cause potentially serious damage to either their car or themselves. And I'm just, again, I'm afraid we're going to make a bad situation worse here. And there's a better solution.
Good point, Andrew. We weren't going to make a conclusion today anyway, given the, the time constraints that we wanted to hear from the police anyway. So, okay. Let me go on to Mr. Barnett, and this is not shutting down the board for any questions, because you'll, we'll start questions. We'll go all over once we have additional witnesses.
So I actually agree with some of what Mr. Schwartz had said. You know, this is hard for me to, to sort of understand the physics of it and, and, and the different, you know, variations of that and not having a, you're not having a traffic expert here, you know, who, who, who knows the area. I think puts me and maybe some of the other folks on the board at a little bit of a disadvantage, because I'm certainly not an expert. I have a very hard time actually picturing what the fence would look like. I would very much appreciate if you could put together an artist's rendition. I'm sort of getting the visual of like a cargo net that's going to be erected across the front of the building based on the, the, the poles and the mesh which, which you described. I don't know if that's what you're envisioning or not, but if there's something that could be done to, to, to give, give myself and the board a much better visual of what you're, you're proposing, I would, I would very much appreciate that.
Perfect. Yeah. And we'll have you go through that rendering. There is some rendering, but we'll go through that next time. Maybe we can add the landscaping between now and then and get a plan.
Of course, you know, having this conversation saying, and we will landscape, you know, I'd like to go into something where, where I'm showed a plan versus, versus, yeah, we will do something. It's hard for me to say yes or no to.
Not a problem. I think that's, that's a good feedback and that's something that we can have Mr. Disco work with him on between now and the November 5th meeting. Okay. Mrs. Rigerio?
I also share the same concerns as Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Burnett. As someone who actually has gotten into an accident, you know, very low speed, it was onward 78, but I am very concerned about, you know, what the damage would be and just need to have a better understanding of what it's going to look like before I can really make a decision.
I understand. Mr. Wischna?
So, I mean, I appreciate the building owners' intent here to protect their asset. And obviously, we are looking to, you know, come up with the safest solution before we, you know, make a decision to, you know, vote on this. But I guess the question I've got is it, and it may be more procedural than anything else, if this is a county-owned roadway and we're making, I thought there was also a modification to the ingress egress. Doesn't the county need to weigh in on that portion of the application as a condition of what we decide? Or do we need to review what they have reviewed before we take our, you know, before we, we are able to make a decision?
Steve, do you want to answer that? I believe that they would have to apply for county approval, but there's been no.
Yeah. So that all said, wouldn't we want the county's traffic engineer to give us feedback on the overall, you know, the, the safety aspects as well as the, you know, the getting their standard protocol and review of, of the ingress egress modification?
Well, the county, because the property fronts on the county road, the county planning board will need to approve the application. Whether they're aware of these concerns, they probably may not pick up on that strictly from looking at the application. Perhaps that's something that can be discussed with the county when Mr. Disco and the applicant communicate with them about adding additional preventive signage or lighting at the curve.
And that's something, that, that's something, Mr. Wischna, that they, now they'll use the next 30 days to reach out to the county with the signage and so forth. I think it'll give it, that's good feedback, Scott.
Yeah, I just think we need to have the most information available to be able to vote.
No, I'm with you. And we don't, and we don't. That's why we're not voting tonight. But Mrs. Kessel?
Yeah, I mean, I echo the sentiments of you folks. We, we need more information. We, we don't have enough, as, as David Barnett said, we don't have enough information regarding the physics of this matter. And we don't want to make a bad situation worse. There's, there's a, you know, a lot at stake here. But that's why you guys are coming back and you have a lot of the questions that, that have been posed and the information that we need. So I think when you come back, we'll be able to have more meaningful discussions about the entire plan and our questions and concerns will hopefully be answered at that time.
Perfect. Any members of the public wish to speak on this application? I'm not opening this application, so, because we'll do it on, on the next time when, when the application comes back. So with this, I'm going to carry this application to November 5th with no additional further notice at 5:30 PM. Zoom instructions will be posted on the township website. This application will be first on the agenda in order to, will be first on the agenda. So be prepared. I think some of the housekeeping items is, Mr. King, you should be working very closely with Mr. Disco, the county, getting a landscaping plan with, approved by the Mozzarella Factory and, and him, and a rendering of what it's going to look like, both in the front of the building and by the gas area, the gas meter area. So that way, board members like Mr. Barnett, Mr. Schwartz can kind of hear it. Ms. Law, if we could please reach out to the police and let them know that we, the board has requested their presence at 5:30 that evening, that would be perfect.
Okay.
So with that, I'm going to carry the application, Mr. King. There's no further additional notice. Steve, anything to add on that?
None whatsoever. Thanks, Jeff.
Perfect. So at this point, the application closed, but I'll take this opportunity to open up this matter to the public. Any matter, any member of the public wish to speak on this application? Boo, anyone in the audience?
No, sir.
Okay. And then seeing none, I'm going to close this, like entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn for the person you didn't talk to.
That's right. I forgot to.
This is not chairman anymore.
Anyone want to second it?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Everyone have a good, safe October. We'll see everyone November 5th.
Thank you. Bye-bye.